I'm Tom Morali, everyone. I'm not from Hope Dale, I'm from Mendon. But back in 2018, I was the, I ran for state senate in the Western Norfolk district, which includes Hope Dale, and I'm happy to lend my support to Kaplan. Because right now, especially, we need local civic leaders who are focused on engaging the community and bettering it, and informing the community and pushing for transparency. And that's, that's something Kaplan is very strong on. Something he, he has prioritized. I'm happy to lend him his support, so I'm helping him out tonight, kind of manage the Zoom. I'd like to hand over to him to let him talk about why he's running for selectman and what he thinks he can bring to the table.
Well, thanks, Tom. Thanks, Tom, for offering to help out, manage the Zoom and manage the chat. We'll say that if you want to put any questions in the chat, you will be the one that's handling that, and you're more than welcome to communicate that way. Welcome, everybody. Thanks for being with me. Thanks for taking the time out of your evening to be here. And also, thanks to Hope Dale Cable Access and Jeff for agreeing to air this on local television. And I'm happy to be here to introduce myself to folks. And what I'd like to do today or this evening is just tell you a little bit about my background, my approach, why I'm running, and what I would bring to the table, and why I'm asking for your vote. And then after I do that, I promise I will try not to go on too long. We definitely open up for questions, and I'm eager to engage with you that way as well. So, my background, just to give the short story, I grew up in Wisconsin. I'm one of a family of four boys. And when I went to college, I went to college in Colorado State University, and I studied philosophy there. And I got my bachelor's of arts, and then eventually my master's degree in philosophy at Colorado State University. That's where I met my wife. She wasn't my wife until later on, when we moved to Iowa, which is where I got my PhD. And I got my PhD in 2011, but we had moved out to Massachusetts, my wife and I, in 2009. So, we've, we've been out here together since 2009. My wife's from Natick, so that's part of the reason why we came out here, because we knew we had some connections here. I am a philosophy professor by profession, so I do like to hear myself talk, so I promise, that's why I said I would sort of self-consciously be brief. And we recently welcomed the newest member of the family, my son Devrim. He is eight months old. He's a pandemic baby. I don't sleep, but I just absolutely love being a father. It's, it's really amazing. And so, you know, it's been an interesting time, but one of the nice things about the pandemic is I've been able to spend a lot of time with him, see him develop, and watch that, that miracle happen. My background in politics, as I mentioned in the answers to the questions that were posted by the Hope Dale MA bulletin board, my background in politics started around 2015, and that was, I lived in Milis at the time. And just to give you a sort of context, I was becoming more and more aware of how things were working politically. And it started with my awareness of things at the national level. And I was, you know, very frustrated about national politics, both, both parties, and just how it all went. And I found myself just sort of yelling at the TV. And I wanted to do something constructive. And so, I thought that what I could do was engage at the local level, because I thought at the local level, well, that would be where I could make a difference. So what I did was I, you know, I started by just attending a town meeting. And I'm sure the folks that are watching this and that have been here before know, you know, town meeting is a special thing. And Jim McCaffrey was the moderator at the time, and he's also a selectman right now. And he gives this speech in the beginning of town meeting about just the power of direct democracy. And that was kind of like a moment for me, just sort of noticing the power of a direct democracy, and seeing the potential power of a direct democracy, and trying, and the idea of harnessing that power really, really inspired me. And so, what I thought I could do is begin a kind of grassroots community organizing to empower people to take advantage of town meeting form of government. And so, I just, you know, plunged ahead with that. And I started holding meetings at the town hall, and we would do things like hold meetings where we would prepare folks for town meeting more than what the Board of Selectment already did. We would hold meetings where we'd talk about local issues. So, it's kind of like what's happening in Hope Dale now. There was issues about, you know, should we bring a recreational marijuana dispensary to town? Again, that's happening in Hope Dale right now. And so, we had folks talk about that. And we, people debated it in a, you know, a friendly setting. We would introduce town government to people. We would hold meetings where we'd introduce town government to people. We introduced the town administrator to folks. What does the town administrator do? You know, what are their duties? And we, when we did those kinds of things. We held candidate forums. You know, this was in the before times, before the pandemic, when you could meet. And we did a candidate forum where the candidates for Board of Selectment at that time would answer questions. We organized marches and things like that. So, this was sort of my entry point into public life as a kind of community organizer. And it really shaped who I am. It really changed who I am. At the same time, though, and I wish I could say this at this, in the same breath, I also joined the Council on Aging. So, that, as folks know, is the area of town government that helps out the 65 and older population, the seniors. But it's also a, acts as the sort of human services part of town. So, it does things like fuel assistance, Medicare and Medicaid funding, meals on wheels, helps the less fortunate folks in town, in addition to, you know, having a senior center and holding programs and helping seniors. So, I, I joined the Council on Aging and got to see that side of town politics as well. And the two things that I did kind of dovetailed together, I would organize meetings for the seniors so that they could be more involved, for example. And that was how I began with my background in politics, and sort of shaped who I am, as I said. So, so why am I running? There's a, there's a bunch of reasons why I'm running. The most immediate one was I saw something on Hope Dale MA bulletin board that said no one had pulled papers at that time. And I was like, oh, well, that's interesting. And a couple of folks I knew also encouraged me to run. And I feel like it's very similar to what happened in 2015, because in 2015, I was very frustrated about what was going on, and I wanted to do something. I wanted to make a difference. And that's definitely how I feel right now. I want to do something to address things and do my part to constructively help folks in a way that, you know, brings my skill set to the table, where my skill set involves grassroots organizing and history with the Council on Aging. There's, there's those kinds of immediate reasons that are the reasons why I'm running. I find this whole process and the whole idea of town government fascinating, and I find the idea of a direct democracy fascinating. So, because my grassroots organizing is my history, I would try to bring a kind of leadership style around that. So, I'm new in town, so I just want folks to realize that because I'm new, I have a lot to learn about Hope Dale, and I look forward to doing that. And I don't come here as someone who is the sort of outsider who's going to just criticize people. Quite the opposite. My style is to, you know, build relationships with folks, especially in town government. The people that are attracted to town government are volunteers who are in their community, and they're very good people, I've always found. So, I'm not here to criticize anyone. I'm here to learn from folks and collaborate with folks. That's my approach. And as a leader on a board of selectmen, everybody knows we are a board of three. And I would just be one member of a three-person board, and we would make decisions as a board. And I would stand by the decisions that we made as a board, even if, say, I was the sole dissenting opinion on some decision. I would stand by the decision of the board insofar as I was a member of that office. And I would bring a leadership style that is, like I said, surrounded this idea of grassroots organizing, but it's not the only leadership style there is. And I don't pretend to know, you know, how to do everything right. And what I would do is I would need to and be welcome collaborating with Selectman Keys and Selectman Arcudi, seeing their leadership style, see how, how they work, learning from them, exposing blind spots in my own thinking, and hopefully, you know, bringing a new perspective. So, just as far as folks need to understand what my approach would be, it would be one where I would try my best, I would always engage with people at a grassroots level. That's just kind of how I'm built. And so, I would continuously do that in, in any number of different ways, whether it's social media, whether it's meeting like this. And that would be my approach. It would be to stay engaged with folks regularly in that sense. And then, the rest of it, I think, is more or less uncontroversial as far as what I would do, right? I would try to make a sort of a vision for Hope Dale. And if folks want, I can say a little bit more about that, and I can share what my vision for Hope Dale would be. But it would involve communicating with others and hearing what their vision is. I would have that vision in mind. I would have a strategic plan in mind for achieving that vision. I would try to make sure and make clear how, you know, in collaboration with the members of the board, what that plan would be. It would be a plan that we would make as a board, okay? And I would try to make clear what we are doing in our day-to-day activities. How does what we do in that day-to-day activity contribute to that plan? And then, at the end of it, you have to sort of explain what you did, and be transparent about what you did, and be honest about your assessments. So, I would do that as well. I would make sure that I'm transparent about how everything went, and we would have a kind of honest assessment. And I would work for transparency in that regard, and that means I would work towards accountability. So, that's really it. I don't think I went on too long. I hope that wasn't too long. I hope that wasn't too boring. And I hope that sort of gives folks a little bit of a basis about who I am and where I come from. And I guess now, if we would want to, I would open it up for questions. So, we can either do it through chat, or you can do it, you can just speak up. There's a small amount of people here, so I don't care how it goes down.
Hi, it's Alicia Butler. How are you?
Hi, Alicia.
I turned the camera on, but there's all sorts of stuff happening in my house right now. I apologize that I had to step out just for one minute, so I didn't catch the end of what you said. But this is a term that is up in May. And so, I was wondering if you had, if this was a plan that if you won, that you would be running again in May, or if you, or if you were just sort of trying it out, or what kind of your long-term plans were with it?
Oh, great question. I mean, I'm in, I'm in it for the long haul. I'm the kind of person that I don't do anything and set out to do something unless I throw everything behind it. I'm throwing everything behind this campaign with grassroots, you know, engagement, with canvassing. And, I mean, I want to, we're going to stay in Hope Dale. I mean, you don't know the future, but we love Hope Dale, and we want to stay here. Have no intention of leaving and no real prospect of leaving. And so, I would want to be here for a while. I also want to make a, like, a real difference, and, and work hard, and, and be persistent and make a difference. And I think that takes time. I think we have some, you know, rough times that are potentially ahead with the pandemic and with everything going on economically. I think we have some tough times coming up. And I would want us to help see us through that as best as I could as a member of that board. And like I said, because I want to actually make a difference, and that takes a while, I will definitely, if the folks would have me and elect me and keep me in office, if I was lucky enough to get the people of Hope Dale behind me, then I would stay for the long haul. So, I don't know. Does that answer your question?
It absolutely does. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your question.
I just want to draw attention to a question asked by Sam Hockenberry. What challenges do you feel Hope Dale faces?
Well, there's obvious economic challenges that come from the slowdown related to the pandemic. As I understand it, just reading over some of the town reports, I think some that you may have helped write, Sam, where the Finance Committee reports, there is somewhat of a reliance on state aid. And, you know, I would definitely want to continue to work with, you know, Brian Murray and, and Ryan Fatman and the state to, and Massachusetts Office of Business Development and other, other areas of the town and other agencies to, you know, get state aid and grants and things like that. But it's hard to say what is on the horizon. We don't know. But I would think that the forecast for that is, is not looking good. Okay? So, the, the challenge that we need to do, and this, this is kind of where I come in, I think, is we need to come together as a community. And if I can do my part to sort of make clear, you know, what we're doing as a board, and, and the, and the challenges that we have as a board, and the decisions that we made, and how we did, I think that I can help. The hope is to get people behind the board through that transparency. And the idea would be that can help us come together as a community and keep Hope Dale the tight-knit, small community that it is, right? And so, get through these tough times, these tough economic times together. There are other challenges that relate to just the, the general state of this country right now, that are, we have a lot of division. And I, you know, given my background is, you know, what drew me to politics was sort of frustration at the larger level. I see the division of this, just the political division as a real challenge. And I see it as getting, you know, there's bad signs ahead about how we're becoming more divided. And I don't think that that means Hope Dale is divided, but I just see that as a general thing that we would need to work together to get through. And I think strengthening Hope Dale as a community would be something that I could help to do, to bring us together and get through that as well. So, economic challenges and, you know, political division challenges are two that come to mind, Sam. I don't know if that answers your question. Please let me know.
So, we also, we have a question, two other questions, one from Carol Hall. Could you give us an idea of the, of what direction you envision the future of Hope Dale might look like?
Yeah. So, part of this is me hearing what the people of Hope Dale have as a vision, right? Part of this, I think, is just sort of nothing revolutionary. I want to keep Hope Dale the way that Hope Dale is, right? The special things about Hope Dale that make it special, I would want to keep those. And I would want to do what I can to obviously help the community as a whole as much as possible. So, that's, that's partly just the sort of what I would take as commonsensical about my vision. There's nothing like revolutionary about that. The idea would be to make the community prosper as a whole. And I would, so what can I say that is more informative? My vision is to, again, sort of promote direct democracy and promote a town meeting form of government where the people of Hope Dale are empowered. Politics is about power, but when it comes to town meeting, the power is with the people. And, you know, if you can get people to sort of recognize that, number one, and you can get them to sort of learn how to harness that power, number two, then I think that's like, that's a beautiful thing. That's a beautiful thing. So, the, the vision I have, as far as what, what I would bring that is not sort of already obvious, is I would try to do my best to make people in Hope Dale more politically engaged if I can, make things, make it easier for folks to become more politically engaged, make things more transparent, share information. I think we need to share information much more than we do. Open meetings are nice. I mean, they are nice, and, but I don't think they're enough. I think we can do things that make it hard for people to not understand the issues that affect them. So, that would be my vision. Things that allow us to empower the people of Hope Dale to harness the town meeting form of government, because then you can get where my role is as the board, as a member of, one member of the Board of Selectmen, right? You can get a kind of partnership. And so, that's what I would want to do. So, Carol, I don't know if that answers, again, I, I, when I ask these, when I answer these questions, I, you know, want to answer them. So, if, if there's any follow-ups from it, folks, please let me know. I mean, I'd be happy to elaborate. So, Carol, does that answer your question?
So, we have, if, if Carol doesn't have anything to add.
Yeah.
We got another question from Alicia Butler. Can you talk a bit about your vision for how the town board slash, slash commissions should work together? How should the BOS work with the Finance Committee, Water Sewer, Board of Health, School to create a cohesive plan and message for the town?
Well, I mean, a lot of this is the way that it already functions, right? You rely on the people that are there, the good people who are volunteers in these committees, and they are doing a lot of the work for you. The Finance Committee does a lot of the work setting the budget and the, you know, capital planning, things like that. And so, the way that you work with them is that you, first of all, rely on their expertise. And you, for me, I'm someone who has no problem just asking questions, asking questions that will help clarify things that relate to whatever the Board of Selectmen's vision is. So, you, it's, it's not anything, I think, too complicated. The idea is that you have a plan, a strategic plan for the, the town, and you keep that plan in mind. And when you rely on the, the work of the various boards, you ask questions that help clarify how, what they're doing helps you envision your plan. So, I don't think that's anything revolutionary, Alicia, but that would be the idea. Any other questions? These are good questions, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Jacob Family, what kinds of ideas do you have for encouraging growth downtown?
So, so economic development is obviously an important thing, and the, the things that you can do with economic development are things that I'm sure the town is already trying and doing, because some of this stuff is, is things that are well-known. You work with the state. There are tax incentive programs, for example. There's something called tax increment financing, where you, if you, you give a, a business a tax break in exchange for them coming here, and, okay, you don't just accept any old version of that deal. You do it when it makes sense. So, are they going to bring jobs here, for example? Are they going to bring, you know, economic development where the people that work there spend money in Hope Dale? So, you look, you look for programs like that, that work with the state. You work with the Massachusetts Office of Business Development. You work with the Milford Area Chamber of Commerce, and the Blackstone Valley Chamber of Commerce, and you get involved with them in various things that they can do. So, I've, I've had history working with the Milford Area Chamber of Commerce to do events where you sort of highlight local businesses. So, that's another thing you can do. You can have events like the Winter Stroll, okay? More events like that, where you have, what does Hope Dale have to offer? And you let people know that so that they can spend money locally. Another idea, and I know that this is with the Master Plan Steering Committee going on right now, this is part of this. And I believe there's a downtown revitalization committee as well. I'm not sure about the activity of that, but I know the Master Plan Steering Committee is, is, you know, humming and starting up at least. You, you get something like an Economic Development Committee. A lot of towns have Economic Development Committees. And they are the ones that try various ideas. They're the ones that write the grants or write the grant proposals, I should say. And they are sort of tied to trying out different ideas. Aside from that, there's other things you can do. There's, you know, community awards. There's something like a Buy Local Day. These are just, part of this is just me, you know, sharing possibilities. Really, when it comes to the ideas, the possibilities are endless. You just have to keep trying different things, and it has to work for Hope Dale. You don't want any old businesses to come into town. You want something that fits with Hope Dale's identity, so you have to do it smart. And when it comes down to it, though, the things that make that sort of stuff happen are the things that I like to do, which is building relationships with people, all right? Building relationships with the people at the Milford Area Chamber of Commerce, just for example, strengthening those relationships, networking, and things like that, right? And really, when it comes down to, you know, what's going to make it happen, it's going to be the strength of those relationships that you build through. It, and it can take a long time. It doesn't, it's not like you snap your fingers and it makes it happen. But if you're persistent at it, and you keep building those relationships, and you keep networking, and you keep trying, and you are accountable, looking at what works and what doesn't, then eventually, things happen. So, you stay at it. I don't know if that, I hope that answers the question. Again, please, any, I'll just, I'll stop saying that, because it doesn't seem to be working in this format. I get it. But here's the sort of thing, just as a stamp. Anyone is free to ask a follow-up, okay? Please do.
If nobody else has a question, I've got a question.
Tom, I was gonna try to follow up. There's been a lot of commotion going on here at home, so it's been hard to, but, um, so I agree with a lot of those challenges that you mentioned and the general direction in motion. And I think having a master plan would be huge to help all of these committees then have like a focused guide. And an Economic Development Committee sounds like a great idea, but the Master Planning Committee took forever to get close to its full number of members. The Finance Committee for 10 years was three people, which is way too much work to put on three people for that long. You know, like, we're having a, we're a small town, so obviously, lots of people need to wear lots of different hats, because you can't hire a finance department to help the committee by doing all the day-to-day work that really needs to be done. But like, how do we get more people to volunteer? How do we actually get a lot of the work that needs to be done already, get done without adding more projects?
Right. I mean, this is a, it's a, it's a big problem. People don't have a lot of time, right? I mean, I'm, I don't have a lot of time. And, and it's, I can totally understand folks having their, their lives. And, and it's, I can totally understand folks having their, their lives and they. Have to deal with their family and their work. And now we're asking them to, um, do something on top of that. How, how do you, how do you get more people involved? I mean, well, part of it is, you know, you respond to certain moments. I do think. That right now is a kind of pivotal moment. Um, I do think there's some energy in town. You go, you go to that, that, um, town meeting, right, with the 364 West Street property? I mean, that was a powerful thing. So like, that's what I'm talking about when I was like, the power of town meeting. Like that's, that energy of that meeting was what I was talking about. So I feel like there's potential. For people to get involved right now. I think people have a lot of pent-up energy from the pandemic. I think that, um, the fact that it's Zoom. Friendly to hold these meetings helps people, okay? And, you know. What, what can you do? You can try to engage with people. In many cases, even like this is just an idea canvassing, right? Seriously. I mean, I, I had, um, when I've been talking with the people of Hope Dale, just trying to introduce folks to me. And like who I am, right? And letting them know what's going on. I do think that this town has much more awareness than some other towns. I mean, I know, I've lived in a fair amount of places. But people have, you know, varying levels of engagement. But some folks were like, oh, I don't really know what's going on. And then you talk with them and then you hear that they do have an opinion. About this or that, and they do, they, they are aware, right? So, um, a lot of times you can just sort of. Find ways to engage with people face-to-face. Sam, I think that's one way to do it. And, and ask them and say, we need, we need people to step up. Are you willing to do it? I don't have like a, a flipping the switch kind of answer to your question, just so we're clear. But I think it's about building relationships. Again, I don't think it's more difficult or easy. Than that, building the kind of relationships where you get to know people and then I think they might step up. Once they see what's at stake and once they sees, for example, the human side of things. So. Sam, since you're there, does that, I mean, does that help at all? I mean, do you wanna?
No, I, I agree and, uh. I, I like the, the thing that you brought up, you know, even canvassing going door-to-door, but more, um, discussion. To try to get people out, cause I know like the Board of Selectmen, like every other meeting. So like once a month. Like they have a, a segment where they're like, we have several vacancies on our committees and we need people to volunteer, but it's the same. Like 12 people watching the meeting. So like, it's not, I don't know how much it really has been getting out to people. But yeah, more varying forms of contact. And then I just wanna touch on. The, your comments about relationship building. If there were any successes that I had. In my time working on the Finance Committee, I feel like it was the communication. That I was sending out to people, uh, and, and, and calling and emailing and. And being upfront with, with what was going on, um, and being more transparent. And I think that that helped. Get the, the committees and members of, um, the different departments to buy into what. We were trying to do or understand where we were coming from better. So I just, I wanna reiterate that I think communication and, and contact seems to be a really good idea and thing to keep pushing for.
Yeah, I mean, if I can, it sounds like we're on the same page and I, if I can add to that, like, yeah, it's not. Rocket science in that sense, right? You engage with people, you look them in the eye, you talk with them. When you, when you say that there's a vacancy in a, in a town organization, people don't know what that. Or that i- is, you know what I mean? Like if you say, I don't know, for example, Board of Health or whatever, right? Like you say, okay, and, and we need someone, like no one knows necessarily what they would be doing, right? Maybe someone says, well, I don't have the skill set to do that. And they don't know what the skill set they need is, right? So if you, um. Engage with people at, at that grassroots level, I mean, yeah. Let's, let's start it. If we, if we have that, let's start a canvas. I mean, why not? I'm serious. I'm serious. Like I would do this kind of stuff where like you, where you, we, we knock on doors, we say, here's, here's the, um. Vacancies, um, do you have some time and, um, I can explain to you what they are. Are you interested in, in giving back? You look people in the eye and they, and they say, oh, okay, that does kind of sound interesting. So more information, yes. Sharing more information, connecting with people more, letting them know what they would be getting into. In order to fill that vacancy, you have to do that. And then they might find it not, uh, might, might find it interesting. So yeah, I think that's. I think that's the way to go. I'm not saying it's easy.
Right.
It's not easy, but I, but I think that it's the, if you, if you work at it, it can, it can make it happen. So thank you for that. Are there any other questions? I mean, these are.
Alicia has a follow-up.
Oh, good.
Here, I could go on video. Sam and I seem to have the same, uh, issues going on in our, in our house. And Sam, I think you're selling yourself a little short. If you say that's your only success you had, um, on the Finance Committee. It was, it was a pleasure to watch you work and work with the different committees. And now full disclosure, I'm the Chair of the School Committee right now, so if you're, I should probably let that. Um, out there. And I think it's just sort of wanting to follow up with what Sam said and sort of what, follow up with my question is. Um, one of the things that I think has been difficult over the past couple of years is that kind of communication and transparency and the boards working. Together. So I think that more of my question was more about, um, not just building the relationships and learning from each other, but getting all the. Players together, um, to be able to make decisions together on the same page for the town. So. For example, we had joint, um, meetings with the Finance Committee when we were discussing the school budget. We had joint meetings with, um. The Board of Health when we were talking about how to reopen the schools. We, uh, tried to do a joint meeting with Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen to talk about Chapter 70 and what that is. And we had to put it off because of some more pressing stuff. So I guess I'm looking for more of. How do you see the Board of Selectmen as a whole, working with the other boards and? And what kind of responsibility fiduciary, I guess even, does the Board of Selectmen have for the town? And how do they work, working with the Finance Committee closely to develop a good budget for the town? I think many of us don't wanna be in that situation where we were this year and last year. However. Sir Sam can chime in here, but it's, it's, next year's not gonna be pretty at all. There's gonna be a lot of hard decisions to make and, and. Who's gonna be making those hard decisions?
Okay.
That's sort of what I want to throw out there.
Yeah, and, um, yeah, so as you just mentioned, it, it comes down to building relationships and, and sharing information and networking. And, and, and those sort of straightforward things. What you, what you would need is a kind, is a. A capital plan, for example, just that, that's for capital, right? Or a, um, a plan for. Um, the needs of the community, whether it is schools, right? This is part of what is going on, I'm assuming. And then just by looking at it with the Master Plan Steering Committee, right? You have a cut, you have an understanding of the Democrat, the demographic shifts. In Hope Dale, right? And so you know, you know what's coming. You know what's coming. And so, and then you have a plan in place to deal what is coming. And so. The way that I would, aside from the common sense stuff that we all recognize about building relationships and open communication. I would frame the discussions and the questions I would ask as one member of the board where, again. I, I'm, I need to keep making that clear that this would be the board making this decision. It would be the board's plan, right? Right? And it would be framing my way of communicating along those lines where. I have that plan in mind and I'm, and I'm looking for them to communicate, um, their situation so that I can help realize that plan. So it's, it's coordinating things around a strategic plan would be the sort of non-commonsensical thing that I would add. So. I, again, you're, now that you're here, does that help at all or?
It does. I, I, cause I think the Board of Selectmen is sort of. Oversees a lot of that stuff and being able to coordinate, making sure it's whatever strategic plan is and having a voice in that strategic plan and. And, um, it's just, um. I'm trying not to be the Debbie Downer. It just feels like we're about to hit some, we're, we're gonna have to make some really hard choices coming up. And, um, so it's, it'll be hard to get everybody on the same page when everybody wants to continue the services the way that they are, but. We're not gonna be able to and I. I, I know it's gonna end up falling to the Board of Selectmen to make those sort of hard, hard decisions. It's not gonna be an easy. Way to jump on board. It's your first time.
No, no. So, you know, um, I'm not here to, you know. Make friends with everybody, you know what I mean? Like I'll, I'm, I am my own person. I, I'm very collaborative and constructive, but I have my own point of view, right? And, um, it is the kind of job I think where if you're pleasing everybody, you're doing it wrong. I do think that, like you have to have your own. You have to stand up for your own and have your own integrity and communicate that. But I mean. And it's not, and it's not nice to tell someone, oh, we're gonna have to cut. This, this funding, for example. It's not, no one likes to hear that. But if you. Do it in a way where you explain the rationale and you're transparent about the rationale. I think you can get people behind you. I mean, I, I, I can literally. Ask someone, what would you do in this situation? Okay? Hear what they would say. And then I would respond with my view about what they said. Does that make sense? So I'd be like, this is a tough decision. I'm, I'm not a know-it-all and I'm not, you know what I mean? This, and, and here's why, here's my thinking. And this is what I believe, but I'm open to hearing a different point of view. So what would you do? Let me hear your point of view, how you would approach it. And then I would be my own person, take that into under advisement. And make a decision where, and not everyone's gonna agree with the decision that we make as a board. Right? And then where my voice is there, but the idea would be at least they would know where we are coming from. That's, I hope that, yeah. And you're right, it's not gonna be easy going to, uh, going forward.
Do we have any other questions? If not, I have one.
Great.
Okay, I think that's my, uh, cue. Alright. So my question for you, Kaplan, is this, uh, throughout this evening, you've pitched the. Sort of solution as. Increasing the involvement of the people of Hope Dale. Um, as well as unlocking the potential of, of the direct democracy of town meeting form of government as the answer to a lot of our problems. My question for you is this, why do you feel you are the man for that job to do that?
I mean, this is, um, how I started, basically. I come to politics with that. Idea of grassroots organizing in my history. Um, that's, that's what I started doing in Milis with the community organizing. That is, um, how I approached things. When the, with the Council on Aging, where I represented some of the less fortunate folks in addition to the, the seniors. Right? So my whole way of looking at things is through the lens of realizing that. A direct, direct democracy is a special form, is a special form of government. Where the idea would be, it would be my job to work in a partnership with the people, right? So the reason why I'm the man for that job is because I. Have that as my background. So I don't know if that answers your question, Tom.
Oh, it does.
Alright. Are there any other questions? I appreciate folks coming and asking these things. It's nice.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. You're welcome. And, um. So I, I mean, I'm hearing more. I mean, I'm open to, you can ask me like. Whatever, I'll, uh, we have some time. I mean, anything that wants, that folks want to know about me, to get to know me a little bit more. Cause I'm new in town. I mean, we're new in town. Um, those kinds of things, you can ask me that, um, or if it's something about my approach.
Well, you being new in town, um, and. What, what, what drew you to decide to, to move to Hope Dale? Like what, what drew you as? Somebody in the, in the, in the market for a new home? What, why, why Hope Dale?
Yeah, so we're, we're actually renting. I'm renting in Hope Dale. So it was a opportunity to rent that came up. Uh, through a mutual friend. And, um, what happened was we had the opportunity to rent. And we, it came up and we, we live on Lake Street and that neighborhood is, was just awesome. And I love my neighborhood and I love my, my neighbors are great. So it was really like the opportunity to live here came up and then we, we took it because we really liked it. And then, I mean, but as far as, you know, the, my plans, long-term, my plans, long-term are to stay here. So. Good question. Thank you. Um, any other questions?
Thanks for the shout-out.
Oh, that's right. I hear, um, Alyssa playing, um, floor hockey or whatever.
Indoor field hockey in her bedroom.
Any other questions? Okay, well, um, this was great. Thank you so much. And, um. Um, I'm gonna, I'll put it in the chat. This is my email, okay? And I'll have, this will be aired on, um. Hope Dale Cable Access and I'll have Jeff put up this, there it is. This email for folks to get in contact with me with, with more questions. This will also be up on YouTube. And I'll put the communication there as well, or some form of communication that makes, that's appropriate for YouTube. So that, you know, this does not have to be the, the last time that we speak. I'm gonna be doing a heavy amount of canvassing. Up until the election. I would welcome folks if you wanna help out. I need some help and, uh, thank you for the folks who have already helped out, like. Huge, just amazing help from folks already. But if you would like to, uh, join the campaign and. And help me, uh, get the word out about my approach, I greatly appreciate that. But. I'm, I'm looking forward to engaging with folks at the grassroots level. And just so everybody knows, the, um, special election is December 8th. And if you would like to do a mail-in ballot. That is, uh, a, something that you can find on the Hope Dale M A Bulletin Board. Thanks to Suzanne, she just posted it today. There's a PDF of that. Just know that, that mail-in ballot application, the application to get one. Is due on December 1st. By 5:00 PM, you have to bring it into the town clerk. And, um. I hope that Lisa and Ellen have enough volunteers. They've been great in, in helping me. So maybe if you wanna help Lisa and Ellen out. And see if they need help. I'm sure maybe they could use some volunteers. I don't know, you can ask Lisa. But those are the important dates. December 8th is the special, uh, town election. If you're, and if you're worried about. The pandemic, then you can do a mail-in ballot. Just make sure you get the application in on December 1st. And I guess I'll just end by saying, I hope everybody stays very safe for the Thanksgiving holiday. And, um, wear a mask, social distance, these kinds of things. It's important that we stay safe. Um, in the months ahead. So, well, thanks again, everybody and take care.